Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order this meeting of the Urbana City Council for Monday, February 27, 2023. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Here.
Mr. Evans, Ms. Hersi, Ms. Colacetti?
Here.
Ms. Bishop?
Here.
Ms. Wilkin?
Here.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Here.
Mayor Marlin?
Here. Next item is approval of minutes from the January 9, 2023 meeting. Is there a motion for approval?
So moved, second.
Moved by Mary Alice, seconded by Chandra. Any substantial corrections? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. That motion passes. We'll move on to additions to the agenda. I would ask that we add an introduction to our 2023 Urbana Poet Laureate to Section D in front of Presentations and Public Input. Seeing no objection, we'll do that. Okay. Moving on to Presentations and Public Input. Yes. We're delighted to welcome the 2023 Urbana Poet Laureate, Janelle Davenport Pleasure. And with her is Stephanie McMahon, our Economic Development Manager. Please turn on your mic.
We just wanted to introduce you to Janelle tonight. She went through the process of applying to be our poet laureate, which was a juried application. And so she is beginning her year as our poet laureate this year. There was a celebration on Sunday at Spurlock, which was just a wonderful event that was put on to celebrate her and all of her many talents. And so we wanted you guys to know her face, as she'll be doing lots of activation and events this year.
And I've been asked to share some additional information about Janelle. She was born in Springfield, Illinois, came from a military family. She joined the Urbana-Champaign community 24 years ago, and she has three amazing children. She works for the University of Illinois as an IT specialist for the College of ACES. She's written two books of poetry, a chapbook titled Eyes Open, and her second is Splitting 650. Her third book, Breathe, will be out next summer. She is a member of the Galaxy of Poets group that works to bring awareness and support to mental health through the art of words. She performs at Soul on Sunday, which is a group that enriches the poetry and music scene in Urbana. She joined forces with the previous poet laureate, Ashante Files, to host workshops for the Riders of Oya, and performed along Will Rieger, who was our first poet laureate in this year's Central Illinois Rivers in Art and Poetry Event. She was a 2020 Artist ACE Awards winner and founded Cinderella Cinderfella, which is a ballroom dance troupe for children. She's performed her poetry at Speak Cafe, Pygmalion, Iron Post, and many other events throughout the community. She's been immersed in arts for more than three decades. In addition to being an author and a spoken word poet, Janelle is an avid dancer and jewelry and recycled clothing designer. She's engaged audiences throughout the U.S. and internationally. She strives to help people of all ages to express themselves creatively through writing, spoken word, music, dance, and other art forms. She was selected, as Stephanie mentioned, through a competitive application and interview process by a panel of literary experts. The poet laureate in Urbana receives a $2,000 honorarium for the one-year term, and it's funded by the City of Urbana Arts and Culture Program. And I'd like to say there aren't many communities our size that sponsor a poet laureate. We also have a youth poet laureate, which we added recently to the program. The jury was drawn to Janelle Davenport Pleasure's proposal due to her strong spoken word and poetry performance skills and substantial experience in creating arts-based programming with a wide and diverse range of local populations that spanned socioeconomic, ethnic, cultural, and age differences. We congratulate Janelle Davenport Pleasure on her position as the third Urbana poet laureate, and she looks forward to providing dynamic poetry and arts programming for the community. Welcome, Janelle. Would you like to say a few words?
Not usually, but (laugh) but no, thank you for this opportunity. I look forward to presenting a plethora of programming for our community, and I hope it will bring us together. So, thank you for this opportunity.
We're delighted that you're here. Thank you. All right, we'll move on to Presentations and Public Input. We have no presentations scheduled for tonight. We'll move on to public input. If any member of the public wants to address the council, please step forward to the microphone and state your name for the record, and you'll have up to five minutes to speak.
Good evening. My name is Pastor Angel Johnson. I've been a tech, especially since 2019, for ARPA funding. We have filled out a grant over and over again. Now you guys going by a point system. You gave me 1.8 and all this stuff, telling me it didn't add up to 3. We had meetings, Zoom meetings, at this city council bill on the second floor. We promised we would not cheat anyone, discredit anyone anymore for their race, their religion, whatever your agenda is. I don't come up here and say someone is gay, so I don't like you. I'm not gonna give you no money because you're gay. But you try to send me an email to say, what about your religious preference? You be getting money from religious people. That's a lie, first off. Secondly, you try to sound religious and that y'all won't give me the money because you think I have church in my building. Angel Youth Center is not, and I put it in the ARPA funding. We are not a religious group. Divine Invitation is our ministry. It's not connected to anything. None of our entities are connected. We have a bank account for each one of them. But what did you tell me? We want to take the money and steal it and open up our other businesses with it. Our companies never ask y'all for a dime. We've been a 501(c)(3) for how long? I told each and every last one of you, 14 years. Never ask your dime to take care of these youth in our community, never. Because our family own our own business, we do it ourself. COVID-19 came, that's the only reason why we trying to use our 501(c)(3). Never had to use it. 2019 come, and then you guys telling people we receiving funding and we're not. I had to prove to everyone that came to me, don't you get release funding? No. We have never got a dime from any ARPA funding, from anyone. And we're constantly doing the work. If you're gonna say something about us, tell the truth. Ask me, Amama Jesus Christ believer. Heck, yeah, surely is, and I'm proud to say it. Religious shouldn't have nothing to do with what I do, what my family building did. We've been working, I've been in daycare for 35 years. Have nothing trying to help other people. I don't want none of y'all to spend another dime of my tax money. I live in Urbana. I pay big taxes because you keep going up. I live in a seven-bedroom home. I was the first black to buy a home in my community, and they wrote me letters and said, get out, you're not wanted. How did you get this home? Are y'all selling drugs, putting things on my house? Can I put a camera on your tree? I'm tired. I'm tired. And black people, you need to be ashamed of yourselves. You sit up here and go along with it. They gonna stick together whether they wrong or right. We have seen it. We be right all the time. We accept everyone, black people do. White people just ain't got it in their heart. That's how they raised some of you. Some white people are my friends. I'm not talking about everyone, but you know who you are. I don't know how y'all can live with yourself. Turn Angel Youth Center down. We have partnered United Way, WCI Channel 3 News. Y'all see us every morning on the news. Don't play crazy now. Who you partnered with wrote me, uh, this why we grade your points. Y'all not partnering with no one but Karen's Way. That's a lie. And I sent y'all every partnership. We partnered with everyone in this community. We have never used religious. You think I'm religious, mess with me if you want to. Who could a clan's religious? A dog could be religious. An animal could be religious. A person with hatred in their heart can be religious. You understand what religious is? Stop it. You just try to find someone. But guess what? We not drug dealers. I've been asked, do we sell drugs? How we get all these companies? No, we don't sell drugs. We don't have to, baby. We're educated people. We don't walk around and have to brag and look like an embossed what we do for people. But y'all do because you don't do it from your heart. Now God is my guidance, see me a Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. Yes, I serve Jesus Christ. But you don't have a right to treat me like a dog and ask me, how we gonna deal with the youth and religious? How we gonna teach the youth religious? Ask any of my students from the university, social worker. Yes, I'm partnered with Katie Swentway, CLL. Got up every day this year, 9:00 in the morning, got on my bed, and get down at our youth center and get a class. I talk to social workers. I'm tired of fighting. I'm tired. I'm tired. You know who we are. We got a whole commercial. WCI came to our academics. We got the highest academic youth center up in here. The highest. The kids be on WCFT. We talking on the radio to get other kids to realize, you might be black, but you could get a 5.3, 5.5, 5.6, 5.9. Black children. You're gonna stop messing with me. And I'm gonna come out here every Monday and tell y'all, change y'all mind and say, you know what? I wanna partner with you.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Your time is up. Thank you.
And y'all better be glad I got respect. Y'all better be glad. I have respect. I'm gonna get off the mic, because guess what? I'm respectful. I would never shame my God for y'all.
Hi, my name is Herbert Burnett, born and raised in Urbana, 20 years in the military. I live in Rantoul. I have a church in Champagne, and I have property in Urbana. And that's what I came here for, is my assistant pastor asked me to come because I own property in Ellis Drive, and I was born and raised. So that's why I came. But I couldn't sit back and not respond to what I just heard. I know them personally. I've been dealing with youth for 30 years. I don't ask nobody for nothing. Every now and then, I get a grant. But I got four corporations, so I kind of do it on my own, and I got some private lenders. But I'm very aware of how money is being thrown around since COVID. And it disheartens me that they're doing all that work and they can't get no money. And I have friends who are just getting droves of money. So whatever the problem is, let's fix it. Because these kids need us, and they need us more now than ever. And I know she's doing some amazing financial literacy classes with the kids there on WFT, and I hear it with my own ears. Nobody tells me. I didn't read in the book. I hear it, and I see what she's doing. And so whatever the problem is, we don't need that. Let's get together and fix the situation. Because these kids need us all. They need you, and they need her. So let's fix it. Thank you.
Anyone else wish to address the council?
Good evening. Good evening. My name is Marlon Mitchell. I am the founder and executive director of First Followers, which is a reentry program here in Champagne, well, in Champagne. I'm also a PhD student at the University of Illinois, PhD candidate, I should say. Should be graduating with my PhD sometime this spring. And I just wanted to come to you all just to talk a little bit about just this whole process, this ARPA funding process. All right, so my research at the university looks at STEM education, and it looks at it from a lens of DEI, diversity, equity, and inclusion. So those three constructs, when we talk about reform in education, those constructs can also be used in funding processes. And a working definition of the three concepts, the constructs, I'll read them. Equity refers to the fair distribution of opportunities to participate and succeed for all. Diversity. Diversity focuses on differences amongst individuals, including demographic differences such as gender, race, ethnicity, and country of origin. And the final construct is inclusion, which refers to the process through which all are made to feel welcome and treated as colleagues. So it is through this lens that I looked at this entire process. I was on the front end of the process when the ARPA funds first came into the county back in January 2020, as many of you all know. We sent out a letter to each one of the leadership teams, meaning the mayors, Champagne, Urbana, county board president, and then also the village of Rantoul. So we've been following this process very closely. And when I say "we," I mean First Followers. So, one of the things that we asked leadership to do was to mark 10% of the funds for violence prevention, community violence. We received funds as fiscal sponsors from the county board maybe a year and a half ago. And again, "we" means First Followers. Last year about this time, we received funds from the City of Champagne. Fast forward to now, First Followers are receiving half of what it requested in the ARPA funds. We're grateful that we received some funds, but there are also organizations that did not receive any funds. So I think it's very problematic with some of the organizations and agencies that receive some of these funds. And in particular, I'm speaking of the organizations that have the capacity to find funding elsewhere, meaning bonds, taxes, large foundation, and other donors. So when we look at this whole process and we look at it through a diversified or DEI lens, one of the things I see are inherent biases. And I know you all spent a lot of time putting together this rubric, this measuring system, this metric system, I should say. But there are inherent biases, and I think that plays out in the haves and have-nots. So when we talk about COVID-19 and exacerbation of certain communities who are disparately impacted, oftentimes, we're talking about people of color. And so I just want to just take a step back and just look at First Followers for a second, and the role that we have played in the community, both in Champagne and in Urbana. I think it was 2017, I do believe, when Aaron Adams was on the council. We were rewarded some funds from the Consolidated Social Service Fund. At that time, we had a pilot project that we called GO-MAD, which is a building construction pre-apprenticeship trade program that targets 18- to 24-year-olds who have been involved with the criminal justice system and are placed at risk of community violence. So fast forward, it's 2023, we're here. That particular program has grown. It has grown considerably to the extent that the Champagne ARPA funds, working alongside the See You Fresh Start Initiative and Joan Walls and her staff, we have been funded, fully funded, with the asks that we asked the City of Champagne. So we're good there. But one of the things that we have done as a reentry program, and I know many of you have seen one of my mentors here, night in and night out, every Monday night, Charles Davidson, who sits here tonight, is that we decided that we need a bigger reach into Urbana, because we understand the landscape here as well. So, just to wrap it up, again, if we take a look at the have and have-nots, and take a step back and look at the processes, the metric system, and we will see, you will see, that there are inherent biases.
Does anyone else wish to address the council? Okay, move on to council input and communications. Anyone from the council wish to speak? We'll move on to standing committees. There are none. Committee of the Hall, council members, Sharice Hersi.
Okay, bringing from the committee of the hall for the approval of city council on the consent agenda ordinance number 2023/02-005, an ordinance vacating an alley, alley north of Main Street, east of Lynn Street, being brought on the consent agenda for your approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved by Sharice, seconded by Mary Alice. The clerk please call the roll.
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Hersi?
Yes.
Ms. Colacetti?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Wilkin?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
That motion passes.
Okay, on the regular agenda, resolution number 2023-02-013R, resolution adopting the City of Urbana American Rescue Plan Act ARPA Concept Plan Project List.
Is there a second?
Second. All right, Chandra. No, no, you can go ahead.
Moved by Sharice, seconded by Chandra. Discussion. James.
Yeah, first of all, I want to apologize to my colleagues for not being here last week. I was out of commission and I was ill. But I did want to say something today, because I was not here to say that. This has been a long process of taking in a lot of information, first through the, with the help of the Regional Planning Commission and the fine work of staff to organize all of the proposals that came to us. A long process of both scoring and then taking presentations from the various groups that were before us. A long period of discussion, careful discussion, deliberation by the board, everybody's opinions being able to be put forward. And while it's not easy, there are some decisions that had to be made. And so I would not say that this is a perfect outcome from what I would have done if I were personally doing it. But I do believe we came to it through a process that we all understood and that we all contributed to through a lot of thought, a lot of deliberation, a lot of conversation. And I'm satisfied with it, and I hope we can approve it tonight. Thanks.
Grace.
Thank you. I wanted to again thank everyone who applied and was a part of this process, and I appreciate the input and participation tonight as well. As we've gone through this process, as James said, things don't turn out the way each of us would have envisioned, but a majority agreement on there. So there were definitely some organizations that I would have liked to have given an opportunity for funding, and I'm personally still open to reevaluate. But I think unless things have changed with others' minds, that's not an option. But if anyone is, I'm open to reevaluate some things. And I also just wanted to touch briefly on the issue about being asked about religious affiliation. And to my understanding, this was an issue that was brought up for one or two organizations who have potential, maybe indirect religious affiliation. And so a question was asked to each of those organizations. And to my understanding, that was not a part of the decision-making process for or against funding. I can't speak for anyone else, and we didn't go into detail on every applicant, especially the ones that we didn't fund. But to my understanding, that was not a major part of that decision-making process. It was just checking the, maybe someone brought up the justification, the eligibility is the word I'm looking for, the eligibility of those projects with religious affiliation. So that was asked to multiple organizations. And I really hope that for the proposals that weren't accepted or weren't accepted entirely, that it's not too discouraging or hurtful of a process. And I really hope that all of these groups can continue doing the great work that they're doing and still try to seek other funds. I hope that list of available funds might be helpful. There might be some other opportunities there. And I hope that this process can be something that will really improve our community and help with COVID recovery as it was intended for. So thank you all again for your participation and engagement, and I appreciate that. Thank you.
Any other comments? Mary Alice, would you take the chair?
Sure. And the chair recognizes Diane.
I just want to address specifically the comment about violence in the community. And that has always been in the forefront of my mind as we went through this process. And when you look at the allocations and the programs that are funded, every single one, in one way or another, addresses root causes of violence. Anything we do that reduces stressors in a household reduces potential for family violence. We're not just talking about gun violence in this community. We're talking about all forms of interpersonal violence. If you go to the alternative school, which is just down the street here in the Comcast Building, the Freedom School that has now been established and will be paid for partly with the ARPA funds that we've allocated, it focuses on the children who are most likely, who have been involved in violence in the past. They are learning to make different choices. They are working with programming, including treatment for past trauma. And the programming at this school, and I will put in a plug, there's an open house tomorrow from 5:00 to 6:30. And if you are interested in seeing what is going on at this particular location to deal with community violence, I strongly encourage that you go to the open house tomorrow. It is directly addressing violence. Health and Wellness Center on Learman Avenue is located in one of the poorest neighborhoods in the community, one in the past which has had some of the most violent crime. It is located close to where the children are. It's a place for teens and families to be. And again, when we have heard over and over again, ma'am, ma'am, you're out of order in the audience. When you go back and look at what we've heard, is there's nowhere for teens to go, nowhere for families to do, nothing to do, there will be at this location. They will provide an opportunity for programs like Dream, for First Followers, for anyone who wants to provide programming for youth, there will be a place on Learman Avenue. All the initiatives directing toward health and preventing homelessness, when you have housing security, food security, you reduce the insecurities and stressors in the household and potential for violence. So every single, and the same thing with the programs that are providing job opportunities, such as Youth Build, or microloans for minority businesses. All of those things provide opportunity for people. And that is, everything we're doing here is, in one way or another, reducing or addressing root causes of community violence. Thank you.
All right, I relinquish the chair back to Diane.
Any other comments? Discussion. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Ms. Colacetti?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Wilkin?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
That motion passes. Reports of special committees? There is none. Reports of officers? I would just repeat the invitation to the open house hosted by the Urbana School District tomorrow afternoon from 5:00 to 6:30 at the two new schools across from the Middle tomorrow afternoon from 5:00 to 6:30 at the two new schools across from the middle school, and this, the open house has been planned by the students themselves, and they're very excited to share their program and their facility with the public. There is no more nude business. Next item is a discussion item for considering an ordinance on crisis pregnancy centers. This was added to the agenda by council members Wilkin and Bishop, and Working with the Party for Socialism and Liberation.
We welcome this evening Sarah Blanco and company to talk with us about crisis pregnancy centers. They are popping up, increasingly popping up all over the country, and we just thought it'd be important for the public to understand what they are and how they operate. I'll let them give their information, and then we can have some discussion afterwards.
Please state your name for the record and make sure your microphone's on, push the button and the green light should be on, and then speak closely into the microphone.
Hi, my name is Rami.
Hello, and my name is Leslie Owens.
Leslie Owens, okay, thank you. And you have 10 minutes.
Hi, as we said, my name is Rami. This is Leslie, and we are organizers with the Party for Socialism and Liberation here in Urbana, and today we will be presenting on crisis pregnancy centers, also known as CPCs, what the issue is and what we propose. Today, we will be discussing what CPCs are, how they are a source of disinformation and manipulation within our community. We will be going over a major study on CPCs and how they are a public safety threat. We will then have an overview of our disclosure proposal, what the proposal is, how CPCs will be required to post signage, and how we will keep CPCs required to be honest, and then afterwards, we hope to address any questions that the council may have. So, crisis pregnancy centers are anti-choice organizations that present themselves as reproductive healthcare centers and use disinformation and manipulation tactics to pressure people to not have abortions. So, you can say that the CPC issue is a public safety issue and an affront to reproductive justice. CPCs present themselves as medical authorities and providers of proper medical services, but staff are often unlicensed and not upfront about their status. They promote falsehoods about mental and physical effects of abortion, so common points that they will go to include that abortion directly leads to depression, cancer, and difficulties with future pregnancies, which is simply not true. They target financially vulnerable people and people without health insurance by offering seemingly quality services and resources for free, but they are not free as clients must enter and navigate an anti-choice environment in order to access them. They are also not medical grade. So, here we have a study from the Alliance, a study of the crisis pregnancy center industry in nine states, and I want to bring the council's attention to how almost two-thirds of CPCs promoted patently false and/or biased medical claims about pregnancy, abortion, contraception, and reproductive health providers, and fewer than half of CPCs indicated that they had a licensed medical professional. None indicated whether medical professionals were employed or volunteers, or full or part-time. And finally, only one out of the 607 CPCs in the study provided contraception care, and I hope that the council is as staggered by these statistics as we are. So, CPCs are a public safety threat. Clients are not operating with an accurate sense of their pregnancy timelines or their potential complications. They are unable to make informed decisions, and ultimately CPCs delay timely pursuit of care, treatments, and abortions. Clients are vulnerable to personal and legal fallout since CPCs are not legally bound to protect the privacy of clients or their data. So, why is this important in Urbana? Well, many Urbana families live in poverty. These families are particularly vulnerable to CPCs and can be targeted by them, especially, this is especially an issue for families without access to healthcare. And Urbana doesn't have any CPCs in city limits quite yet, but two CPCs exist in Champaign already, and before they potentially arrive in Urbana is the best time to ensure that they're required to advertise their services honestly and discourage organizations intending to engage in deceptive tactics from opening here. Now, I'm going to hand over the mic to Leslie, who will be talking about our proposal.
Thank you. So, today I'm going to be talking about the disclosure proposal that we are bringing to the city council. Originally, we had thought this might be an ordinance, but after talking to some folks, it sounded like there might be other ways to do this, maybe through zoning, so we're just calling it a proposal very broadly. The purpose of our proposal overall is to ensure that all pregnant people in Urbana are not deceived, misled, or given inaccurate information about their pregnancy options. So, the proposal itself is based on municipal legislation that has been passed in two locations. One is Seattle, and the other is Somerville, Massachusetts, and it basically requires that crisis pregnancy centers disclose important facts to their clients, and it also imposes fines for false advertising. So, there are basically three required signage components to this. The first is about being a licensed medical facility, so any unlicensed limited services pregnancy facility shall disseminate to the clients onsite, and this is both for in-print and digital advertising materials, on the internet, in person. The statement, quote, "This facility is not licensed as a medical facility by the state of Illinois and has no licensed medical provider who provides or directly supervises the provision of services." The second signage suggestion is very similar, but it's based on licensed counselors, so mental health professionals and social workers. Often, licensed mental health professionals and social workers are not the ones giving counseling at CPCs, so if that is the case, they'll be required to post, quote, "The counselors at this facility are not licensed to practice mental health care or social work in the state of Illinois." And finally, one major concern is about HIPAA. CPCs actually, a lot of times, have the freedom to share patient information with whomever they want because they're not covered by HIPAA. So, in the case that CPC is not required by HIPAA or some other law to keep client health information confidential, then they would need to post the statement, quote, "This facility is not covered by HIPAA and may share client health information with third parties." CPCs, finally, and perhaps most importantly, are required to be honest in our proposal, so no crisis pregnancy center shall make or disseminate any statement concerning any pregnancy-related service or the provision of any pregnancy-related service which is untrue or misleading, whether by statement or omission, and this is to cover especially things like Rami mentioned previously, this idea that abortion can cause cancer or depression, anything that's just patently false and is known to be false by the medical community. And then also, they're required to not talk about anything that basically they do not intend to perform. So, if they're luring people in with the idea of getting sort of broad pregnancy counseling and pregnancy healthcare, but then they fully intend to not do parts of that, such as contraceptive counseling or potential abortion counseling, then they're required to talk about that, basically. So, we have some time, I think, for questions from the council.
Questions for the speakers. James?
Yeah, thank you for this presentation. I know, I'm interested in pursuing this. I think we need to approach it from a standpoint of how things can be done based on where they're located because of zoning. The one thing that I'm curious about, you mentioned that there are two such locations in Champaign already. I'm curious how they could be, if they're advertising themselves as a health facility, and how they could open without being subject to the Illinois Health Facility Services Review Board, which takes a look at new health facilities that are being opened in the context of regional healthcare and whether that balances. I don't know if there are some aspects of healthcare that aren't subject to that kind of review, but it would seem like if there is the false advertising that you're concerned about going on, that they would be subject to that, because clinical services do fall under the health that review boards auspices. I'm just curious if you guys have discussed that or looked into that, and is that a state way to approach challenging these operations?
Yeah, to answer the first part of your question, the two crisis pregnancy centers in Champaign, I am not sure if, whether or not they outwardly advertise themselves as such. I do know that one of the websites doesn't have very clear information about what services they do provide, but to answer the second question a little bit more in depth, because crisis pregnancy centers are not technically health centers, they can jump through a lot of loopholes in the healthcare system, which is why it is so important that we keep these centers accountable and have clear signage outside of them that basically outlines how they are not a medical center.
Chandra.
To sort of piggyback off that and answer your question, the state doesn't, like she said, because it doesn't deem itself as a healthcare center, doesn't have certified professionals there, they can jump through those hoops, and also, when they advertise, they are vague in their statements, and so, and oftentimes, they set up themselves in the vicinity of other licensed healthcare facilities, so when people see them, they think, you know, that they're alike. So, it's a lot of kind of sneaky deceptive practices around it and jumping through those and taking advantage of those loopholes. I mean, and crisis pregnancy centers have been around for, I think, since like 1967, so they aren't a new thing, they're just becoming more apparent these days, especially in the post-rural world, and so, I think, and like they said in their presentation, they prey upon college students, financially vulnerable people, so I think, like you said, zoning, zoning something could be a way to prevent these from popping up in our community, so I would definitely be very much in support of exploring this as well.
Mary Alice.
I have a question for Dave. So, what we're hearing is that there, if you're not a healthcare facility, you don't have to go through all of the procedures that the state has put up for healthcare facilities. What is the practice or the law behind people who may allude to providing health services? Is there anything in the law that would allow us to clearly articulate from anybody, regardless of their crisis, pregnancy centers, or any other kind of service that they have to advertise, that they are not licensed?
Thank you, Councilmember. And I'll address kind of the both aspects, I guess, of this, because at first, the conversation about the zoning kind of concept and the state regulatory board made some sense, but I also immediately started thinking, well, they don't hold themselves out as a healthcare center, so I'm assuming they probably get around that requirement by that. In terms of the zoning concept, certainly understand that idea, and I'd want to look into it deeper, and the reason I say that is, a lot of communities tried to zone out of existence in their community, certain types of businesses, and that's typically the adult-use business, and, you know, the state and courts have suggested you can't regulate something like that completely out of existence, you really have to find a place for them somewhere, and that's typically why you find them, like in industrial-zoned areas. You push them out to a location that is a little bit less desirable and not close to your neighborhood, and so, as a location-based issue, we can certainly look into the idea of that, but I'm just cautious on the idea of trying to zone it out of existence completely in a community. In terms of advertising, I think that's difficult. What I'll share, when I saw on the agenda, just did a very cursory review into this kind of concept, and I appreciate in the presentation, you said that your thoughts or recommendations were based on a couple of other communities in other states' ordinances, but what I did find was a case that came out of the state of California where the US Supreme Court actually weighed in on this, and it was this very topic, on the idea of forcing a, for lack of a better word, the business to put up a signage that specified exactly these things, and the Supreme Court said, no, that's unconstitutional, it's a violation of the First Amendment, and so, I think even in that area, I have some concern and caution, and just, please understand, I recognize the concern, and I certainly understand the desire to step into this to address that particular concern. I think we'll need to do some thinking, some more digging into that particular US Supreme Court case, see if there's anything that came after that that maybe changed that landscape. I will tell you, in terms of signage, it's not related, but several years ago, there was a big push just in regular signage, outdoor advertising signage, where, again, Supreme Court weighs in, and the result of that, in my mind, was that the idea of government regulation of signage is minimal to none, the ability to regulate those things, and so, if you think about it, this is the reverse of someone saying something I don't like, and I want the government to regulate what they're saying because I don't like it. This is stepping in to force someone to put out some kind of advertising that they themselves choose not to, and so, it's kind of like the opposite version of, you know, some of those kinds of scenarios where it does kind of impact First Amendment issues, and so, you know, I just, I don't know if you've seen that case out of California, if there's anything that's come up in the states where you've suggested that your recommendations are based on, to see if there's any challenges coming by way of those particular states or not, and just kind of see how that's landed, and so, I think this is going to take some thought, I think, to step into this area and kind of address the concern that's been raised.
Sharice.
Okay, I guess what I want to know, mainly, it's also, I'm ready to ask you some questions to piggyback with what Mary Alice said, but is there, are there any ordinances that would keep a citizen from going old-school, like women's suffrage old-school, and being out in front of a particular business with their own signage? Are there any stating what this particular thing does, or business does?
I guess, Councilmember, I have to look and see, again, I will admit, I don't think anybody really knows all the ordinances in place in the City of Urbana or any city in particular. I know some communities do have ordinances that talk about the idea of picketing and the concept of doing that, and kind of put a box around it, so to speak, in terms of not creating, you know, concerns or riots, too strong of a word, but I mean, just a conflict at that point where they're actually picketing in terms of, trying to do it location-based in terms of sidewalks or things like that, and so, I want to look and see if we have anything in place. You know, like I said, a lot of communities do have stuff in place to be able to allow for that concept. You know, if there's not something in Urbana currently, does that mean they can't do it? I don't necessarily want to say that right now as I sit here, but, you know, that certainly may be an aspect of addressing the concern. I don't know that it reaches, you know, the ultimate point, because like I said, I certainly understand the concern, I would not want to be misled myself in going to seek any kind of quote-unquote "care" on that, but I guess I just want to be careful about how we approach it.
Thank you.
Any other questions? James?
So, again, I think we should be looking at this, I think it's a good topic for us to talk about. I want to, I would like to know how you're engaging contacts in the state legislature, because I believe we have a climate in the state that would be receptive and supportive of what you're talking about, and maybe we could pursue this at a state level, and I'd also like to know if you've contacted the Attorney General about the deceptive practice question, because again, I think in Kwame Raoul, as our Attorney General in the state, you have a person you can go to and would be supportive of, if there's something going on in Champaign right now that is this way? going on in Champaign right now that is this way, it's deceptive practices and we can demonstrate that, that's what the Attorney General does, one of the things the Attorney General does. So I'm just curious if you're pursuing either of those two routes as well.
No, I don't believe that we've reached out to any of those folks yet, but we definitely appreciate the suggestion, and we'll look into possible other avenues.
Grace.
Thank you. Thanks so much, Leslie and Rami, for the presentation, and for others in your organization putting together this kind of draft ideas that was in the packet. Just wanted to highlight again, you've got great definitions and some of the specifications on what they're proposing. And I'm definitely curious to hear follow-up from staff later on about how or if this can work legally and also where it fits, as in, is this a standalone ordinance? Is this a zoning thing? We kicked around potentially, could this be a new category that's a special use only, not permitted by right? I don't know if that's toeing the line on zoning eliminations too closely, and if this could be possibly like set language so that it's like, these are the conditions if a special use permit were approved for one, if that's a potential route. So I know there's still a lot of questions, but I appreciate having this initial discussion, kind of getting people aware of this issue, because it is kind of complicated and something I wasn't as aware of previously. So my questions, kind of for council discussion tonight, I think we've already, some have answered some of these questions, but was about your general thoughts and support on proceeding, and then how, if we proceed, and also if we have also mentioned the idea of passing a resolution in support of reproductive healthcare in general as far as protecting legitimate clinics. I don't know if Chandra is interested in speaking more on that, but that's something else we could move on, either as a separate resolution and pass these separately, or if there's potential for a joint kind of thing somehow. So yeah, I'd love to hear more from council members, and I look forward to seeing how or if we proceed with this.
I agree with, well, I know the county passed a reproductive freedom resolution sort of thing. I mean, it covers the whole county, but I'm not sure if like, if it's redundant, if the city does it as well, but I would totally be behind that and help with drafting a resolution around that. And great idea about the zoning by special use permit, not by right. If these were to try to establish here in Urbana, I think that's a good idea as well. I'm glad this presentation happened, and I hope that people are, become more aware and understand the difference between true healthcare providers and these crisis pregnancy centers. I just want people to be so aware so that they are informed and make the best choice for themselves, not because they were sort of pushed into a situation where they, you know, don't have a choice at that point. So definitely be skeptical of a healthcare center offering free services, asked to see licenses, all of that stuff, just as an informed consumer.
Jaya.
Yeah, I also want to say thank you for your presentation, and also for community members who previously come out to raise the concern about crisis pregnancy centers, excuse me. I know that members of your groups and other community members have raised this, and I'm glad to see some movement on this. I do think that figuring out what is the safest legal route in terms of addressing this issue makes a lot of sense, whether it's, you know, kind of having that not-by-right kind of aspect of it. And also, I think the resolution, even if it is a bit redundant, is still worth making the statement, is what I would say. I would be in support of Urbana passing a resolution. These are challenging times, and Illinois is a state that a lot of people are turning to, whether they're living here or they're coming here because they need help, because they don't have access to the resources that they need elsewhere. And so making sure that as folks are trying to access those resources here in our community, they're clearly available and it's clear what is a true resource and what might actually lead to further harm is really important. Thank you.
James?
Last question, I promise. Are you also taking this to the Champaign City Council? Because I will point out that they are currently in an election, and so it's a good place to get those candidates to say where they're at.
Mary Alice.
So I want to be crystal clear here. I think that the practices, deceptive practices of these types of organizations is repugnant. I think that we have to be cautious about freedom of speech. It is in our constitution. And at the same time, I think it is, I don't know the legal jargon, but I do think deception, deceptive practices can be sustainable in some kind of addressed way. So there's a lot of things that I think should be navigated here. I also think that, you know, addressing broader statements, I'm thinking about conversion therapy, I'm thinking about things that are medically just not proven. If we go through with the zoning, the special use or something, I'd like to make it a little broad so that it can cover more areas. I'm not entirely sure how to do that, but I'm certainly willing to have that conversation and to talk about these types of issues. I also think that we are all sitting here in city council, and we're all having these conversations, getting the information and so forth, but truly, the general public, I would be surprised if the general public even understands what HIPAA stands for. And I think it is absolutely an issue with these types of services that purport to have some kind of medical bent to it, I guess is the best way to say it. So even educating people about what HIPAA is, what does it mean, is, I think, important for, from a community standpoint. So I think that there's a lot of questions here, a lot of really good questions, and I'm willing to have those conversations. But I think maybe the best way to start is really from a legal standpoint.
Thanks. So I was just wondering on that, if our kind of next follow-up, like if we could have a follow-up discussion in a reasonable timeframe, if you had input on what you thought might be reasonable for kind of legal review, and I imagine that maybe different departments on staff might want to kick around some ideas and brainstorming. This group with PSL has been very patient and also very vigilant and wanting to get this passed, and also, I think, hopefully, understanding that there's also the processes and that things take time. So I was wondering if you had an idea on when might be a good time to have a follow-up discussion?
I'm just gonna say, I think it depends on what Dave finds when he starts doing the legal research. So, I mean, we can target like a month from now, and then if we need more time, we can do that and just give you a sort of a status update on where the research is. And since I was able to get the mic, can we get the slides, please? That would be helpful, to get copies of your slides. You can send them to the clerk, and then they'll be passed around. So if we could just target a month and we'll come back.
Thank you very much. Okay, the last item on the agenda is closed session for property acquisition pursuant to five ILCS 120/2C5. Could I have a motion to go into closed session?
I'm moved to go into closed session. Pursuant to property acquisition, five ILCS 120/2C5.
Second. Moved by Chandra, seconded by Sharice. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Ms. Colacetti?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Wilkin?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
Mayor Marlin?
Yes.
And for the public, we will adjourn immediately following the closed session, so this is the end of business for the meeting. I'll entertain a motion to come back into open session.
I move that we come back into open session.
And I second that move.
Motion by Mary Alice, seconded by Sharice. Will the clerk please call the roll? Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Ms. Colacetti?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Wilkin?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
Mayor Marlin?
Yes.
And with no further business before the council, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.